February 6, 2024. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Township in Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicant professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly into the microphones. Keep your mouth very close to the microphone so people can hear you, so that the recording secretary can properly process the minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you have completed your testimony. Thank you. Okay, I think now we start with Shapendu's swearing in.
I believe that was already done.
I just did.
Yeah, so we can just start the roll call.
All right, okay. Then we got to approve the minutes of...
I have to do the roll call first.
Oh, okay.
Cheryl Bethia, there she is. I was just going to say she texted me saying she was running late, so Cheryl is here. Let's give her a moment to get, I marked her here. Rich Prokanic, Vaseem Verdas, and Chairman Thomas asked to be excused this evening. Alan Rich.
Here.
Gary Rosenthal.
Here.
Robert Shepherd.
Here.
Faraz Khan.
Here.
Michael Dougherty.
Here.
Kunal Lakia.
I couldn't talk that easy.
Shapendu Singh.
Here.
Okay, you can do the minutes now.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is approve the minutes from our regular meeting of February 9, 2025.
January 9.
January.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Bob, did you second, right? Bob Shepherd?
Did I?
No, it's Alan Rich?
Alan Rich.
Okay, Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Michael Dougherty?
Yes.
And that's all.
Okay, so then that's approved. Now, we have to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 16, 2025.
I'll move.
Second.
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Faraz Khan?
Yes.
Michael Dougherty?
Yes.
Okay, now the next thing we're going to, we have the resolution for the case brought by Andaz Caterers, ZBA 240016. Do I have someone who can?
Do you want to know the member? The members that can vote are Cheryl Bethia, Alan Rich, Gary Rosenthal, and Robert Shepherd.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
And it's the same group for the next two resolutions as well.
Well, that makes it easy.
Yep.
Okay, then the next one is Princeton Route 27, ZBA 240015.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes. Okay, the final resolution is Millstone Valley Fire Department, ZBA 240019.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
And Robert Shepherd?
Yes. Okay, now we're going to move on to the hearing section of this, of this meeting. But before we start, I want to let everybody know that Manjit Singh and Ravinder Ka Kor, ZBA 2400011, will not be heard tonight. It is being rescheduled for April 3, 2025, and it is carried with notice needed for residential properties.
April 3, okay.
Okay, so then that's been taken care of, so now we will hear the only other matter that's on for tonight. That's Fleet Franklin, Inc., ZBA 2400022. Speak into the microphone.
Is this better?
Not really. When you, when I gave you instruction, you have to put your mouth close to it so everybody can hear.
Is this better?
Whoa, way better.
All right. Good evening. My name is Stephen Ward. I'm from the law firm of Giordano Halloran and Cisla, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Before we get started, I did want to put the plan up on the screen. Do we? Thank you. We're here this evening with regards to the property at Block 468.07, Lot 46.35. Generally, we are seeking relief to eliminate a community garden that was part of a prior approval from 2019. I have three witnesses with me this evening. If I may, I'd like to bring up my first witness.
That'd be just fine.
Sir, if you could just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give before this board is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you please state your name and spell your last name for the record, please?
Into the microphone, please.
Yes, my name is Paul Schneier. That's spelled S-C-H-N-E-I-E-R.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Paul, are you a member and principal of Fleet Franklin LLC, the developer of The Grove at Somerset? Yes. And this project was approved by Board Resolution ZBA-16-17, adopted January 17, 2019. Is that correct? I believe that is correct, although I did not get the approvals. It was approved by someone else. I purchased it approved. So the approval was assigned to you? Correct. Or, excuse me, assigned to Fleet Franklin? Yes. And Fleet Franklin developed The Grove at Somerset, is that correct? Yes. And if you could just, could just describe the development? It's a nice little development of 34 townhouses, homeowner association governed. There's a roadway entering the, the community. There is a significant retention basin to handle stormwater, and there are, there are no, there are recreational amenities in the form of passive open space and a gazebo. And the development has been fully constructed except for the subject community garden? That is correct. I just wanted to bring the board's attention to where the community garden is.
That'd be a good start.
Is it there now? No.
Better.
Sorry. I don't have a mouse. There we go. So right, right towards this end here. Towards the top of the screen, there is the, is the, where the proposed community garden was, was to be constructed behind these units. Now, Paul, in going through the transition from, from the developer-controlled development, transitioning to the association, was there an agreement made between the developer and the association? Yes, we, we reached an agreement to transition the community to the homeowners directly. We agreed on all terms. However, the homeowners informed me that they did not want us to build the community garden. And so we, we put some money in escrow in case the garden had to be built, and we agreed that I would come back before the zoning board and request relief from this condition. And there's no pecuniary gain to me. I don't gain anything by the elimination of this garden. If it's eliminated, the money that would have been used to build the garden goes to the homeowners, and if for some reason you, you deny the request, then we'll build the garden. But the homeowners don't want it because it's very close to building five, and I'll let the homeowners themselves explain why they feel it's not something they want in their community. And the, the proposal is to simply have this as open space and it would be just grassed with no other improvements. Is that correct? Yes, we would just leave it the way it is now. It's manicured lawn. They, I believe the homeowners use this for various purposes, and our proposal is to just leave it as is. I have nothing further of this witness, so I would ask if the board has any questions.
Does the board have any questions of this witness?
I do. There's no playground for kids. I mean, there's swings and the slides, nothing like that? No, there is none. Okay. Is that something that could go there? Well, maybe the tenants don't want that either, right? You know, a lot of things I think theoretically could go there, but it wasn't approved with a playground, and the homeowners haven't requested one. And, and so, you know, I guess maybe for some of the same reasons, they don't want that much activity behind their homes. These are their backyards, and they like the serenity and the peace.
This a senior community?
I'm sorry.
This a senior community?
No, it is not. It's for families, for anybody.
What year was this developed?
Good question. It was developed, I think, during COVID. I forget, it's been a while since we completed it. It's been at least three years.
Was this developed in one shot or was it like gradual?
One shot. We came in, we...
Because I see the plans revised 2019, so it was developed after 2019, and there wasn't any playground, play areas for this, this lot, this area?
No, they, nothing was contemplated other than the, there's passive open space, which is delineated with some fencing and some landscaping and benches, and the gazebo, which was constructed. And the third element to satisfy the town's recreation requirement was to be this community garden. But, you know, these amenities are to serve the homeowners, and if the homeowners don't want something, you know, far be it from me to force them.
What kind of garden was it? Were we talking a vegetable and fruit patch or flowers and that kind of thing?
Whatever anybody wanted to grow here theoretically, you could see the, again, the proximity to building five, and you can see the layout. I don't know how many areas, and it was undetermined how this would be divided up, who would get to use it. And I think there's some concern about, again, the proximity to the backyards of this one building and, you know, not knowing who might be in the garden, issue of safety and security for the people whose homes are right here.
What's it being used for right now?
I'll let the homeowner speak to that, but they, they celebrate various holidays and events, and they, they definitely use the, the grassed area.
So is it, I'm seeing the layout there. Is it just a one solid section of grass? There's not section like it's showing on the, on the map there, like plots?
No, it's just, it's just grass.
One continuous?
That's what would have been built, yes.
Got it.
Okay, well, if there are no further questions from the board, I'd like to open it up to the public to ask the public if they would like to, at this point, ask the witness any questions. It's not time for the people in the, in the audience to give their opinion as to whether this is a good project or not. You can just, what you want to do here is just ask the witness questions that you believe to be relevant to the issue. Does anybody want to speak? Then I'm going to close the public portion for this witness, and we'll ask the attorney presenting the case to introduce his next witness. Thank you for coming and speaking.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Sir, if you can raise your right hand, please. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you just state your name and spell your last name for the record, please?
My name is Aditya Mukapati. Last name spelled M-O-K, K as in kilo, kilo, A-P-A-T-I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you a resident at The Grove at Somerset?
Yes, I am.
Are you a member of the board of the Homeowners Association?
Yes, that is right.
And are you authorized to speak on behalf of the board?
Yes.
Okay. And can you confirm, you heard testimony from the prior witness that the developer and the association had come to an agreement? Is that correct?
Yes, that is right.
And was, as part of that agreement, the developer agreed to seek this approval to eliminate the community garden. Is that right?
Yes, that is right.
Okay, so is it fair to say that the association supports the elimination of this community garden?
Why do we let him ask, answer that question? But I'll even ask it. Does the Homeowners Association support the idea of not having the garden?
Yes.
And why do, are they now against the idea of having the garden?
For various reasons. One, the, the homeowners feel the proximity of that garden to the specific building there, which is close to, you, building number five it is called. There is a sense of lack of privacy when homeowners, other, you know, other homeowners go there at orders at their own time to do their, potentially do activity in there. And secondly, once the community garden is put, the maintenance activity that needs to go in there to upkeep the community garden, that we either need volunteers or we need to hire new vendors to keep it up and tidy. And thirdly, and most importantly, the community wanted that space to be open so they can conduct activities during summer, which we have conducted several times, games and events, bringing the entire community together. It could be, you know, playing, playing catch, playing some volleyball out there. So we have demonstrated multiple activities over the past few summers. Right now, it's snow, not as much, but we've done that. And we have some supporters here as well in the audience who would, given the opportunity, would like to provide their opinion as well.
Great, it's a nice group of people you have back there, but unless somebody gets up and objects, I don't really know if we need to hear them. Board, have any questions?
So was there a way to conduct a survey from the residents, and what were the results of that, you know, survey? Did you, like, how did you ask? Okay, I have a few people who say no, but was there, was that reached out to everybody? Yeah, absolutely. That was the first step that was conducted, to seek opinion of the community members. Although majority people have been, you know, between talks, they were saying, we don't want it. We said, let us go ahead and conduct an actual survey and make it objective. So we conducted a survey using a survey form, which was digital. We sent it out using multiple methods, email of, of the social media groups and also through the management company. And the majority has came out, have come out to, in support of removing the community garden. Almost 75% of the votes that we received have supported to remove the, to not have the community garden and keep it open.
Thank you. How many survey responses did you get?
24 units responded off of 34.
Okay.
And 75% of them supported not having the community garden.
Any further questions?
So really what you're trying to do then? Yes. Take the, combine the two recreation areas into one, basically, and have little gatherings out there then?
Yes.
I think it's a good idea.
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions?
If none, then I'm going to open this up again to the public. The public would like to ask this witness any questions. They are welcome to do so by coming up to the podium and speaking into the microphone there. Since it appears that no one is interested in making, making any, asking any questions of the witness, I will excuse the witness and thank him for his time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state your name and spell your last name for the record, please?
My name is Andrew Janiw, J-A-N-I-W. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. My address, my professional address is 315 Highway 34 in Colts Neck, New Jersey. I'm a principal with the firm of Beacon Planning and Consulting Services. For the board's benefit, my credentials are as such. I am a graduate of the New Jersey Institute of Technology with a bachelor's and master's degree in civil engineering, currently serving as the planner for the Borough of Carter at Middlesex County, the Borough of Freehold in Monmouth County, as well as Livingston Township in Essex County. And in 2022, I was appointed to the State Board of Professional Planners by Governor Murphy. I've been in business now for 25 years, and I've testified throughout the state on behalf of private clients.
I think we'll accept him as a witness, as a planner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Janiw, have you visited the site?
I have.
Okay. And if you could just describe the, the variance relief sought?
Certainly. So in preparation for this evening, I've not only visited this site, but I've reviewed your ordinances, I've reviewed the resolution, which I believe this was approved in, the resolution was voted on in January of 2019. So that gives you a timeframe in terms of when the construction may have commenced, as well as the plan.
Please try and speak into the, right into that microphone.
Yes, I will, thank you. So what we are seeking is relief of the conditional standard to provide 400 square feet of recreation. I mean, it's a, it's a technical variance in terms of what's defined as recreation because your ordinance doesn't define recreation. It defines open space, which has elements that include passive and active recreation. What we're seeking to do is to convert that community garden into a more passive space, which was really flexible in terms of the type of recreation that the homeowners would use, as was described by the homeowners association representative. They use it for community gatherings, they use it for games, volleyball and the like, and they, they enjoy the flexibility, and they think that's less intrusive, particularly upon building five, but certainly alleviates some of the concerns in terms of the maintenance of a garden, how that would happen, and the variety of reasons that were mentioned. So the relief we're seeking is from the elimination of the requirement to provide that community garden and essentially exchange that recreation space for something that's more passive. With respect to the relief that we need, it's a C2 variance, and as this board knows, a variance isn't granted just for the benefit of the applicant, the applicant in this case being the, the builder of the, of the community. However, there has to be a public purpose and the public benefit. Well, in this case, the public resides within this community, and they've asked for this relief, and that burden has fallen on the shoulders of Mr. Shire and Fleet Franklin, and they are here tonight in fulfillment of a promise to seek relief, to remove that, again, without financial gain. The money's been posted that if it does need to be constructed, it can be. Otherwise, the money goes to the community, and they could use it as they see fit. So under a C2 variance or the flexible variance, we have to indicate that the variance is specific to a piece of property, and it is, that the purposes of the municipal land use law would be furthered by this application. I certainly believe that we are furthering at least two requirements within the MLUL, and just to read those into the record, that is the provision of sufficient, sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses and open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements, and wanted to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. In this case, there was an area that was set aside for a garden. The community seeks to convert that into something that's more flexible to represent how they want to seek their recreation, so we certainly believe we're on point with that. The next is to encourage planned unit developments, such as this, to incorporate the best features of design and relate the type, design, and layout of the community to that particular site. And I believe you've heard the residents of the community here, we have the benefit of this being an established community, saying, this is how we'd like to use our property, and please, let's eliminate this because we see this being as a burden. So we do further the purposes of the municipal land use law, and finally, we have to discuss that the benefits of the deviation outweigh any detriment. In this case, you've heard what the benefits are, the flexibility for the community to enjoy the space as they see fit. They've, they've raised some concerns with respect to the maintenance of the property, to the privacy of individuals, and those are genuine concerns that led to the survey and the steps that brought us to this meeting. So I think in terms of the benefits, it's the flexibility that the community wants. With respect to substantial detriment, I don't see any. We're not eliminating any recreational space. We're converting it to something that's more passive and more flexible. It'll still be there for the community to use as they see fit. There won't be a burden upon the community for lack of open space. That's going to be, you know, continuous. And then finally, the variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. The zone plan and ordinance requires a certain amount of open space and recreational area. That won't be touched, there's no further structures being proposed on this property. It's really about granting the flexibility to the community. So when we look at this as a, as a C2 balance, I certainly think that the standards are met and that this board can grant the relief.
Questions from the board?
I just have one technical question. The, the figure of 248 square feet that was referenced on the, on the plan, is that the resulting amount of, of recreation space without the community garden?
So the community garden would have represented 6,542. The community garden would have represented 6,542 square feet of, of recreation space. It's still pursuant to your definitions, within open space, a passive recreation area. So in reading your ordinance and reading the definitions, I believe we still meet the requirement for the, for the recreation space. It's passive recreation that, that's going to be used with the flexibility of the community. It's not going to be dedicated for a community garden, but it's not going to be used for any other purpose other than for the benefit and enjoyment of the community.
Okay, let me just clarify something, just as far as the way that we, we see this. And I don't... And I don't mention this, I don't say this in the context of having a problem with what they're proposing, but when, so what, this requirement comes from our ordinance that requires 400 square feet of recreation space for every unit and townhouse developments. And, you know, and I meant, we mentioned in the report, that usually comes in the form of actual improvements, you know, pools, clubhouses, dog parks, barbecue areas, you know, actual improvements. So, you know, it's my opinion, and that's the way that we've applied that requirement over the decades. So, again, I'm not, I, I've heard the testimony. I don't necessarily have a concern personally with converting, you know, and to meet that requirement, the original developer proposes community gardens, and the board, you know, accepted that as a reasonable proposal, as an actual physical improvement to meet that requirement. Though my only clarification is to say, if it's just lawn, it technically doesn't comply. And I just want to make sure, put that on the record, because I don't want the next developer to come in and try to say that all of their open lawn areas are, are active recreation going towards those requirements. So, again, I just wanted to make that clear. I understand where, where the planner may be coming from, but that's not how we apply that requirement. So, my opinion, they need relief. You've heard testimony from the planner, as well as from the Homeowners Association. You can decide whether you're satisfied with that they provided testimony in support of that relief.
Well, now, didn't I hear you say before that there was a, that there was some sort of a gazebo built somewhere, or some sort of other outbuilding for the neighborhood?
Yes, there is a gazebo.
Okay. So, so that doesn't count, Mark? That's not enough?
No, that's, that's my, my point. They, there is a gazebo that's on there, and the walkway was counted. There was an upper right-hand corner, there was, there's a, a play area that I believe is fenced in with some benches, you know, so there was some, you know, as part of that site plan, they're required to do some physical thing on the site plan to make it, you know, actually recreation, not just open lawn. Again, I'm not saying it to be, I'm not critical of this application. I just want to make sure that the next developer comes down the road, doesn't say, yep, we meet it because we have two areas of lawn. That's not, that's, that, we don't count that towards that requirement. It's tennis courts and barbecue pits and actual things that are physical improvements on the plan.
Hence the reason for the variance.
That's all, that's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying, is that it is a variance, and then again, you've been provided testimony by both the planner and the Homeowners Association representative. You can decide whether you've presented enough testimony to, to grant that variance.
Wow. Okay, does there, is there anybody in the, in the public here that would like to get up and, and ask a question of this witness? Seeing nobody coming forward, I'm going to close the, that aspect of the testimony. And now, at this point, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak either on behalf of or against this variance, they can come up to the microphone and, and as I say, say their piece. Seeing no one, I'm going to close that portion of the hearing as well. And does the board, anyone on the board have anything they'd like to say before we, we offer a motion?
Yeah, just, I would just like to discuss that notion a little bit, because that was really the reason why I asked the question, is what exactly exists there, if it's just lawn? The challenge is going forward, how do you defend against someone just saying, I have lawn, and I, and I meet that, kind of piggybacking on what, what Mr. Healy said. The whole purpose of the variance is so there is some type of recreational feature. The definition of a lawn is not really, any lawn could be considered recreational feature if, if we treat it that way.
Well, Cheryl, let me, I think I can answer that, and frankly, that's part of the reason why I wanted to say what I said before. I think here you do, I think what makes this different than a developer coming in for their original approval, is that this is a community that is in place. They are living there, and, and basically, they're telling you that they don't need this, but that was originally proposed by the original developer to meet that requirement. You know, now, fast forward six years later, they've been living there a few years, and they're basically telling you, we don't want it. I feel comfortable by, you know, again, if the board was, because of that, those particular circumstances of this particular case, I feel comfortable that you're not setting a precedent for the next one. If we have a townhouse development, and that developer says, oh, I've got these lawn areas between buildings seven and eight, that's recreation, it's lawn, I felt comfortable saying, no. And that's why they need the variance, that is technically, that lawn area, even though they might use it, my opinion is it doesn't count towards that requirement. So, they need the variance. And the next developer that comes down the road and says, oh, my lawn area between seven and eight, the answer is no. They're going to have to propose something real.
And just to add to what Mark just said is, this isn't the original developer that's asking for this, it's the people that are living there that's asking for this. So, I think that makes a difference, because it's, it's the people that actually are living there and using the property, and they don't want it. So, I think that's a distinction, as opposed to, like Mark said, someone coming in, new application, and saying, you know, this lawn area is our recreation, you know, is what we're proposing for the recreational aspect of it.
I would feel, I would be more concerned if the board, honestly, if the board made the determination that it did count, because then that would be setting a precedent for the next townhouse development that comes into, you know, that comes into town.
Okay. Good point.
Mr. Vice Chair, I do think, if I may, I think there are some residents here in support of the application, if there's a chance for public comment.
What's that?
I said if there, if there's a chance for public comment.
Well, there is a chance for public comment. I thought we passed it, but if you've got somebody who'd like to come up and--
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah.
I thought that was a question, sorry.
I think we're just going to proceed from this point. I'm going to make a motion. I move that we grant Fleet Franklin, Inc., ZBA 24-00022, a use variance, which will allow the applicant to eliminate a garden requirement that was included in the original approval from 2019, and that this is being treated as a use variance, because the current use of the property, which would otherwise be a garden, is simply going to be remaining I'll get a second?
Cheryl Vethia?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Faraz Khan?
Yes.
Michael Doherty?
Yes.
Shohandu Singh?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, board.
I think that's it, right?
Well, that is our last matter for the evening, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The night is closed.